Okay, we're all set. Okay, could you call the roll, please? Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here. Okay, we're all here, so now we will, um, our first order of business is to adapt the meeting minutes from the April 5th meeting. We have a motion to accept the minutes. Jack, you have a second. John, you're in favor. I oppose.
I abstained since I was not in attendance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to new business. PLC, oh, what was it? PLCBA 2023 0024. 92 Euclid Avenue. Uh, one, single-family residential neighborhood two area variance. Do we have the applicant present? Okay. Want to come up, please, and state your name and address and what you want to do?
Hi, Jennifer Manna. We live at 92 Euclid Ave, Troy. Um, we're asking for a variance due to the fact that we had recycled wood pallets. He treated wood pallets, not currently treated. Sorry, I have no idea about them.
That's right, you did a great job.
Okay. We're just, we're, we're looking for an affordable and environmentally friendly way to put up a barrier in our front yard for our kids, our pets, and our garden that we have. Um, and the cost of building materials has really gone up, and finding an environmentally friendly way to create a fence in a budget that we can afford was not going to be possible. So we did some research, and we found that other people have really successfully created fences using recycled wood pallets. And we spoke to a local Troy business, and we were able to find some to create the fence that we wanted to create. Um, the pallets are not complete, and they're not in their finished form. Um, we do plan to replace any pieces that are broken or that need to be sanded down. Uh, we plan to paint it so that it looks like a horizontal fence, like it would out of any other wood materials. Um, and we also plan to have some local flowers and herbs along the top of it. Um, pallets are unique in that there's a space along the top for us to plant some things to support local pollinators. Um, I did bring some pictures of some pallet fences that inspired us, just to give a bit of a visual for what we're, what we're planning to do. Because I think it's a little bit hard to do just looking at recycled wood pallets. They don't look very exciting, they don't look very pretty. I don't know if you want to see those.
Well, we do, you're welcome to bring them up, yes. But we did get some email to us. Uh, was that from you, or one of your supporters, or, I don't know, somebody mailed them to, somebody emailed us.
That's too soon, yeah.
Um, these are the pallet fences that inspired us, and just hoping to find one in the middle of the white ones that are closest to what we're aiming to do. Um, and these are just some images from the goal of other horizontal fences that are similar, but.
That's true.
I think that's what we got in time.
Yeah, yeah.
What we have.
Um, my application really is pretty thorough in what we were thinking about. You know, you've already got that, you've already read it, it's like. We've used up a lot of time when we're explaining them.
Right.
But I do, I guess, want to request, or I hope that the zoning board will just consider the fact that if we went to the box store and we bought the exact same fence posts that are used to stabilize pallets, and we bought boards, and we affixed them to those fence posts in the exact same way, in exact same spacing, the exact same plans, we probably already have a permit, because wood is an acceptable material still. So the real difference here is that we're using something recycled, we're using something that does need a little bit of effort on our part to make it look nice for what we're going for in our neighborhood and our house. Um, and they're already put together, which does save our family time, which is important because we have three young children, and we are doing this ourselves. So I hope that you'll consider that. If I wanted to sort out all these materials, we'd probably would already have the fence built with them.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? John?
My question isn't for the applicant, my question is a process question. Are we reviewing an application for a fence, or only specific to a wood pallet fence? Because if, if it were rejected, would the applicant come back with another application to build a, a similar fence on the property with different materials?
Well, according to the zoning code, it says that barbed wire, electric fence, chicken wire, pallets, tires, and plywood shall not be used as fencing material. So that kind of is obviously a problem, isn't it? That's the problem. Oh, I am.
To clarify, um, yes, that is the problem, that's the way the code reads, so the variance is a request, or the request is a variance from that provision.
Right.
So to answer your question, the variance is to allow a pallet, pallet fence. If this board were to deny that, it's not saying that this applicant couldn't put up a fence, but this applicant couldn't put up a pallet fence.
Okay.
To your question.
It does, thank you.
Uh, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, did you put it up already?
We did, we made a mistake. I've never owned a house before, and we messed up, and I called both, and I said, is I supposed to get a permit? And they said, just let me come down. Um, so we put up part of it, not all of it. We have stopped as requested, um, and we haven't done any, any further work to fix boards or to paint it, because we were told to stop, so we stopped. And they're the one, the code enforcement said we should go before the zoning board, um, because of how the ordinance is there.
Thank you.
Do we know the specs of each pallet, like, how tall is it?
Um, they are 48 inches, they're really like 47 inches, um, by 48, I want to say 40, because they're a standard pallet size, but I think it's 40 by 48, and when measured, they're about 47.
Okay.
Um, if we have no further questions of the applicant, we might as well move along to see if there's anybody in favor of this app, of this proposal. Wants to speak in favor, or do you just want to indicate that you're here, because it looks like you're busy, huh?
Is this, okay. Okay. I've never done this before either.
Okay, so you have to introduce yourself, and tell us where, what your address is, please.
Uh, I'm Melanie O'Malley, and I have a business downtown at 455 Fulton Street.
Just a minute. Is somebody on Zooming with us since that was not me? Well, please be mute, I hear voices from somewhere. Why do I think Caroline's iPhone is not on, or is it, there you go. Thank you. Go ahead, Melanie, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, Melanie O'Malley.
Uh, I'm very impressed at you guys doing a hybrid in-person Zoom thing. That is more than I could ever manage. Um, uh, one of the things that I love about Troy and why I brought my business to Troy is uh, the emphasis on sustainability and sense of community, and the forward motion Troy is making in all these efforts. And so constructing a fence out of pallets is a, a kind of obvious thing, and they're, like the applicant said, there's extra elbow grease required to clean them up and make them look presentable, but when you look at a horizontal slatted fence, you guys have the photos in front of you, the net result is a structure that is super common, and in the, like, DIY world, pallets can actually be remarkably beautiful, and in a way sort of disappear because they just become the same as any other fence that you would picture. And so I just wanted to, rather than just raise my hand, reiterate those points, and, um, just say I really hope that this can go through, because it seems foolish to be spending time when, uh, the kind of playground bullying that's taking place and brought us all here could have just been a conversation among neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else to speak in favor? Okay, now, I, I assume there's some people who are in opposition to this particular proposal, as there is for the others. Might I just say before we all stand up, we all, I know I did, I presume the other members of the board read all of the emails that we received, um, regarding this, this proposal. I would just ask that, please, please, don't everyone stand up and say it's ugly. If, if we can say that, you know, have one person stand up and say, for all of these reasons, we think you should vote this down, and then we could have a show of hands of the other people who are going to say the exact same thing that the first person said. I don't see any benefit to that. Um, if you have something different to say, that's fine. But if you're going to say the same thing that the first person says, I just ask you, please, at the end, we will ask, how many people here are in opposition to this? And then, I mean, I don't know, probably all say, I'm a hateful person if I say this, but, you know what I mean? We don't have to hear the same thing 100 times. Oh, I'm sorry, is there somebody on the, um, Zooming who's in favor of this proposal? Emma?
Emma, yes, can you hear me?
I'm sure you can. But that's okay.
Hello?
Amanda, you in favor? All right, well, let's start with Emma. Emma's in favor, so Emma, could you state your name, your address, and go ahead and tell us what you want to say.
Okay, um.
As I just suggested, the opposition, I would suggest to you that if you want to speak to what Melanie just said, please you say, I agree with Melanie. But if you have another point you want to make, by all means, make it.
Um, I agree with Melanie. Melanie was the last supporter, right?
Yes.
Yes, I agree with her. Um, I'm Emma Lojdis, I'm their next door neighbor, I live at 90 Euclid, and I like it. I support their building the fence.
I see that, you sent us an email, too.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you, appreciate that.
No problem.
Did you have something else you wanted to say, Emma? No.
No, I'm sorry, I said, no problem.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. Anybody else speaking in favor? Zooming?
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm here, too.
Okay, Amanda, go ahead, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Amanda Missinio, and my address is 83 Euclid Avenue. And I am here in favor of the proposal for the same reasons stated previously.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else to speak in favor? Okay, so now we'll go on to the opposition. We'll do the people who are here first, and then we'll go to the Zooming. Okay, so who here wants to speak in opposition? Okay, come ahead. Wait a minute, are you all coming together? You're making me nervous, huh? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought you were assured, but don't, I see you're. No, that's fine. Yeah, right, exactly, probably speak better.
Getting taller very quickly.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anne Beer. This is my husband, Mark Walsh, and our daughter, Dagny Walsh. We live at 89 Euclid Ave, which is actually directly across the street from 92 Euclid Ave. I've lived at 89 Euclid Ave for 11 years now. Husband has lived there for about close to 30 years. Our daughter, this is the only home that she's known. Before I begin, I just want to make sure that I did submit a letter. Does that become part of the record?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, we're here tonight to voice our opposition to the variance. Um, we're against the variance for two major reasons. That granting the variance would, one, be a detriment to our neighborhood, and, two, it would set a very negative precedent for the city of Troy. In support of our position, we asked two local realtors to drive through the neighborhood, to look at the subject property, and then to render their opinion on it. You have those letters, they're, uh, they're part of my letter, which is Exhibit B. And I'd like to just highlight certain parts of those letters. Ms. Judy Sanders, who is a local Realtor, with more than 20 years of Realtor experience, says, quote, "The wood pallets used as fencing in the front yard of 92 Euclid Ave are not characteristic of the neighborhood. This is unsightly and a huge eyesore," unquote. Ms. Lori Leckendy, who is the, uh, she manages two Caldwell Banker offices in Rensler County. She has over 30 years of experience, stated the following, quote, "Pallet fencing, if installed in the Euclid Avenue neighborhood, whether painted or stained, would be considered very inconsistent with the neighborhood aesthetic, would decrease the style and appeal of surrounding homes, including the subject property, and would be completely inconsistent with the intent and the goals of the city of Troy's zoning concerning fencing. Approving the use of pallet materials, particularly in the home's front yard, would pose a serious threat to the neighboring home's values," unquote. She went on to state that, quote, "Non-conforming properties that display low-quality construction elements, particularly something of such obvious lower quality, such as fencing made from pallets, would without question negatively impact the property value of the subject property and the properties that surround it," unquote. Besides being a detriment to our neighborhood, granting the variance would also, in our opinion, set a very negative precedent for the city of Troy. Wood pallet fences would start popping up, not just on Euclid Avenue, but all over the city of Troy. The applicants indicate that they would maintain their pallet fence, but that does not mean that other people would. Rough-cut, untreated, rudimentary wood pallets were not designed to be used as fencing, and if exposed to the northeast climate, will quickly rot and fall apart. So not only would you have unsightly pallet fences all over the city, you would have unsightly pallet fences that are rotting and falling apart all over the city. This would be a code enforcer's nightmare.
Um, okay, is that it?
Finally, the applicant states that this is a, quote, "A fairly common fencing solution," unquote. I work as an attorney, and one of my.
I could tell that.
Yes, one of, one of my practice areas is actually residential real estate. Um, and I close about 60 homes a year. And so over the course of the last five years, I've closed about 300 homes. These properties have been located in Rensler County, Schenectady, Albany, Saratoga, Washington, Columbia Counties, in urban, suburban, and rural, rural communities. In all of these 300 transactions, I have never seen a fence made of pallets, either in the front yard or in the backyard. So for these reasons, and also I did state three additional reasons in our letter.
Yes.
Um, we are asking that this variance be denied. Um, I would like to address the comment, because I know that at the end, that you did, um, question the applicant. Asking, is the fence up? And she stated partially. Um, and then she stated that she didn't know that she wasn't supposed to put the fence up. This, this is not true. This fence, the beginning of it, started going up the weekend of March 25th. You'll see a photo of it, I took a photo of it on March 27th. Sending it to my friend could not believe that anything like this was occurring in our city of Troy. And so I have it dated as March 27th, partially put up. Code went to their house on March 29th and told them they could not have the fence. They then, two weeks, it stood in that state, as it's shown in Exhibit C. On April 9th, they finished erecting almost all of the fence. So to say they didn't know they weren't supposed to put it up, that's not true.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh.
I had one thing, though.
All right.
We, as, we believe in community as well. And Anne spent three and a half hours Saturday going around to the neighbors, and she got 17 different neighbors to pledge money so that we could purchase a fence, because we're not unsympathetic to their plight. Everybody knows that money is tight.
Right.
So I, I went across the street, I spoke to, um, Mrs. Minaz's husband, and said, hey, we would like to, we're not unsympathetic, we would like to purchase, help you purchase a fence, we have $500. Um, that would be code compliant, and there were several of us that also offered that we would help you install the fence, so you were not doing this on your own, because they have small children, I just wanted to bring that up. Mr. Minaz came over on Sunday afternoon and said, no, thank you.
Okay.
That's all, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, does anybody else want to speak in opposition who has something different to say? Or would you just like to give a show of hands for how many people are here? In, oh, wait a minute, hang on, wait a minute, before we do that. Okay, no, go ahead, and, and we'll say, anybody in the room who is in opposition, would you like to raise your hand so we could see how many people are here, are in, several, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 people. Am I right? Angie, 13, or is it 14? I missed a guy. 15, okay, I'm going to miss somebody. All right, we have 15 people here in opposition, and, um, who on the, um, who's Zooming is in opposition to this proposal? I'm sure Becca is, I know you, I recognize your name from, um, did you want to speak or no? Becca, Melo?
That's the only one, she's on us.
Hi.
We got a letter from them.
Yeah.
I'm here for a 36 calling out.
Oh, yeah, you're right, oh, I'm all confused, okay, all right, forget it. Right, we're down, you're around from Growing Avenue, and your husband is here, because I followed him. Okay, anybody of the remaining people Zooming, I'm here for Euclid Avenue. Okay, all right, so then, does anybody from the board have anything further they would like to say, question?
Um, I don't think so. I had a question about the, uh, there was a comment that the applicant made about the pallets that, uh, you know, they're, they're safe, and, uh, they got it, them donated. Is there any certification of, of what the material origin and condition of the pallets? You know, are they stamped as, you know, useful for X, Y, or Z purpose?
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry. Um, they're stamped as heat-treated, um, which means they were treated with high heat, um, when they were used for what they were originally used for, instead of being treated with chemicals.
Okay, okay, thank you. By the way, did you have something you wanted to say in rebuttal, so to speak, of the opposition? I should have asked you that, too. Go ahead, if you do.
Yes, um, code enforcement did not come and speak to us. Um, they did come to our house, which I found out when I went to code enforcement. No one came to talk to us about the fence, so calling us liars.
Okay, well, that, you know what, yeah, that, that's over there. Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
To tell us, and, um, we did continue erecting the fence, and our permit was denied, and we were told to stop, and so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, did you have something you wanted to say, Eva?
Uh, well, um, a couple of the comments were from contractors, and they were highly detailed, and I wondered if any of those commenters are present today that may want to respond to statements about the heat treating, the condition of the fencing, short-term, long-term.
Do you? Yeah, sure. And then, okay, you have to state your name.
Scott Cal.
Yeah, and you live in the neighborhood, right? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So I did send in an email.
Right.
Which I enjoyed composing, actually, brought back a lot of memories of the city, building in the city. Um, I am here because I built a lot of stuff, and I know what's right and I know what's wrong, and this is definitely wrong. Um, it was touched upon about rot of the wood. That's gonna happen, it's gonna happen sooner than later. Fence will begin to collapse, and then there'll be a fight about fixing it, so as a resident, it, um, it's really disturbing to me as a resident, as also as a builder. So there's two things going on in my mind right now. I live nearby, four houses up, and I've built in this city my whole life, my whole working life. So, um, I don't know exactly what to say other than what I send into people. Uh, I've been, I've crossed paths with many inspectors over the years, dear to my heart, Sammy Napoli, great guy. Um, and he held the line. And if any of you knew Jim Cash, that guy was really, he held the line big time. And as a builder, we tried very hard, he's Jim Cash. And if he saw this fence today, he would, he would just shake his head. I don't know where he is now, assuming he's still alive, he's not that old, but, um, you know, those are the things that come to my mind.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have something you wanted to say, too?
Thank you, Jay Ryan, 147 Euclid Avenue. I sent in a letter.
Yep, yep, we got your letter, too. Yep.
I just want the people that are building this fence, and it is true that they do heat treat pallets uh, by heating them in a kiln. However, more pallets are treated with chemicals, toxic chemicals, than heat treatment, because it's a more efficient, cheaper process. The chances of these all being heat-treated pallets are slim and not. Uh, these pallets, if, if you had read, but I don't want to be redundant, like, you're wasting your time, but, uh, the statement using heat-treated pallets is an environmentally friendly alternative to using chemical-laden fencing materials is a misnomer. Typically, heat-treated pallets are, is achieved by treating the pallets with methylobromy, the toxic pesticide that has been linked to human health problems and the depletion of the ozone layer. Uh, I included a center from the Disease Control Clarification of it, like an MSDS, that tells you how they should be handled and so forth, but, uh, you don't want children around these things. These folks have a couple of kids, and they, what I understand, they have some kind of a daycare where they have a few more that can. And, uh, it's just not a safe thing. Uh, the fence is built to obstruct the view of the driveways coming up the street. It's built too close to the right-of-way, and there's just a number of things that keep us being owed, and I think you all know that, and specifically, fences are not to be built per the Building Code, actually, it wasn't mentioned in, in your zoning law, it states what you can't build them on. But it, it, it doesn't say anything about non.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's specifically stated.
Specifically says in the code, in the zoning code, yeah, no, pal.
You know, I don't like doing this with a name.
Right.
I mean, there's, as you know, there's many neighbors that are opposed to this, and this could have been done differently, and I think the city could have handled it differently, instead of wasting the time of this valuable board on something like this. People should be handling things other than a fence. This should have been done in code enforcement, it's been done that way for 100 years in Troy. Scott Cal, I've known through my career, I'm older than Scott, but, uh, we've worked together many times, and Stan and I were friends, and the names that he brought up, Napoli's, and Hee Champagne's, and Sam's Cirilla's. Something like this never would have happened in the old days, but then, you know, everything's crazy today. But this should have been handled right here in City Hall, it shouldn't be here, all these people shouldn't be dragged out, and you people shouldn't be wasting your time with a fence.
Okay, thank you very much.
Zoning, it's not a land variance.
Right.
They're trying to change a code.
Good point, good point. Okay, do we have anything further that we might bring up? Or are we ready to vote? Does anybody, I'm sorry, didn't look this way. Okay, no, no? Okay.
We do not need a secret on this, because it's, um, been listed as a type two. Um, but I did just want to make a comment, if, if I should.
Absolutely.
Um, so. Um, so. As a member of the steering committee who created the new zoning code. Um, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of poring through every single piece of the old code and updating it and making it more in alignment with our comprehensive plan. Um, by experts. Um, I'm not one of them. I was on there as a, you know, because I'm a member of the zoning board and a, you know, a community member. But I learned a lot. And what I know is that specific materials like pallets were in the old code, but they were also carried over into the new code for a reason. And I do believe that, um, there is a place for them. And I absolutely agree that it's a great alternative to traditional fencing in some instances. I, I don't believe in the front of the house. Um, is one of them. Um, the pictures that you submitted are beautiful projects that look like maybe they're in the back of a big yard where, you know, you've got an enclosed garden. And, um, you know, I think that's a great idea. Um, but again, I'm as a, you know, I, I kind of treat it as my baby, but this new zoning code, um, was very thoughtfully created. Um, and if, if those specific materials were carried over into the new code, I do believe that, um, at least for me, that I feel like we should honor that and not straight from it.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Elaine, yes.
I respect your statement. I just want to caution that any decisions have to be made with respect to the criteria that you must consider for an area variance.
Sure.
I'm not saying that.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't factor in, I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
That's not a deciding factor since there are legal criteria you have to consider.
Absolutely.
Okay, are we ready? Katie, do you want to make a motion or?
Yeah, I can, I can make it unless someone else land on it.
I will, if you want. Are you ready?
Yeah, I, okay. Um, so, Madam Chair, in PLZBA 2023-0024. Um, I make a motion to deny the area variance based on the following findings of fact. Um. I do believe it's true that an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood based on all of the, um, you know, the, the comments that have been made by the neighbors. Um. And, you know, according to what we've heard from realtors, that a detriment to nearby properties may be created by granting the variance. Um. I do believe it's substantial because it is encompassing an entire front yard. Um, and it is visually um. Substantial. It, it is, um, it is not out of sight. It is right in plain view. Um. I do believe that the alleged difficulty was self-created. Um, you know, I understand that not knowing that you needed to have, um, a permit to do a fence, that, you know, that's, that's a mistake that I know a lot of people do make. Um, but we can't, um, you know, I feel like we can't deny that it was a self-created difficulty. Um. And I also believe that the benefits sought by the applicant, there is another feasible method for, um, the applicant to pursue, um, other than this variance. So for those reasons, um, I make a move to, a motion to deny the variance.
We have a second on that motion? John?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny and a second and on the motion, Edie, Dandy?
Um, I support the denial.
Okay. John Normile?
I vote yes to deny.
Jack McCann? Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to deny. Oh, I'm sorry, Kane McLaren?
Yes, to deny.
Okay, I'm sorry, but, um, basically too, on the fact that it clearly says in the zoning code, pallets aren't allowed. Um. I'm sorry, but that's our decision. Okay, the next case. Is ZB, no, PLZBA 2023-0025, 36 Pauling Avenue, in our two zone, two-family residential. But, um, the applicant is asking for a use variance. Cindy Ward is proposing to convert this former elderly home into 18 studio apartments. Somebody asks you to move your conversations outside if you could, and we'll listen to your application. Introduce yourself, please, and tell us what you want to do.
Yes, Stephen Hart with Heart Engineering. I live in East Green Bush, New York, and I'm here tonight on behalf of 36 Pauling Ave LLC. And with me, as you noted, is Cindy Ward, who's the owner and developer with this project. So in essence, as noted in the notice that you had had here, the public notice, this was a 36-bed elderly housing facility back in 2019, 2020 is when the applicant was looking to purchase this property. Had about a couple of year delay between COVID and, and the way they had to sell that project. So it's three years later and I guess we're here in front of the board. Uh, the intent, which is requiring a use variance is that they're looking to turn the 9,000 square foot building into 18 studio apartments. The idea is to attract young urban professionals, um, that want to live in an efficient apartment. It's a fully furnished apartment, all utilities included. Uh, the apartments are ranging in size from 300 to 400 square foot. So the idea is that, I think we all know where apartments are today. They're $2,000 a month to live in an apartment, plus your utilities on top of it. So the idea is just to try to create an environment where hardworking individuals and hopefully a lot of people that work in the city, uh, and maybe they work at the college as well, they'd be able to walk, not need to park, you know, even though it's 18 apartments. Uh, we did look at some of the traffic counts, you'd be looking between 12 to 14 cars, AM or PM as far as whether they're coming to the site or leaving, let's say to go to work. So that would give you an idea on the traffic that could be expected out there. So again, the building's roughly 4,500 square foot on each level. Not necessarily meant for a single family or two-family home, which I know is a permitted use within the code. So the idea is to have, uh, again, 18 studio apartments.
Okay, do we have any, um, questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
I, I have one question. Um, you refer to a traffic count. Was that your own sub that did it? Or do you have any, uh, supporting data from the state or the city?
Yeah, so that's from, and part of the traffic plan. And I think if we were to get an approval tonight and went to the planning board, uh, we did look into that. So Creighton Manning's a well-recognized traffic engineer in the area. And that, that came out of the ITE manual, which is the Institute for Transportation Engineers.
So they already performed that count?
That is correct.
Did the state or city, uh, did they use any data from their databases?
Uh, I am, I'm not sure of that. We had asked them again just to go to the ITE manual. Like, I think as part of the information that we provided, it said to pull it out of that document.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else at this moment?
Um, I have a question.
Okay.
In order for us to consider a use variance, um, there needs to be, and the burden of proof is on the applicant, um, to prove that, um, you cannot realize a reasonable return for another use in that area, for an approved use in that area. Um, and that the, the hardship is not self-created. Um, so we require financial documents. And I know in your, in your application, um, you use the figure of a million dollars, you know, to convert that into, um, you know, a livable, um, allowed use, um, in the zone. Um, I speaking for myself, I don't know that that's enough of what we need as far as financial evidence. Um, I don't know if you could speak to that? If you've got specs, um, written up that, that we didn't get?
And would that be about the, the cost of the million dollars or the permitted uses and the other that we denoted here in our letter?
Kind of both.
Okay.
Um. So showing the permitted uses, it certainly gives us an idea of what wouldn't, would, would and would not work there. But we don't really, other than just kind of saying a million dollars or, you know, an additional 100,000 because of the neglect of the building, doesn't really give us an accurate picture of, um, at least for myself, I, I'm not.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. I mean, you know, we, lots of times people come in and they say, you know, we're going to make this a single-family home. The request is this much for renovations and this much for the utilities. And they actually have the figures down, you know, but rather than just say it'll cost you a million dollars. I mean, maybe, maybe it'd be 2 million, I don't know. But, you know, we need, we don't have any figures here. So that's part of the problem.
I know as far as the cost, I think Cindy would be able to zero us in closer to where that number came from. As far as the permitted uses and trying to prove out each one of those, I would probably have to provide you additional information. Again, if that was a concerning factor by the board members tonight, I, I don't know if we'd be able to table the, table the decision.
Yeah, it would have to, it would have to be because it is one of the criteria by which we decide whether or not you, you, uh, should get the use variance. Um, Cindy has something, maybe, pardon me, she wants.
I was just going to ask a related question. Like.
Okay.
Why 18? Like, is there, is there a monetary reason why it needed to be 18 and not, say, six bigger apartments? Or, um, you know, something more?
Well, our demographic, when we bought that building, we.
Speak into the microphone, please.
So when we bought the building, we thought about a demographic that was going to be taking a bus. You know, so really to try to expand, 18 just came in because that's what's going to fit in the building without making them too small or, or too big for a single person. Really, our demographic is just a single person who wants to be able, the bus line was the selling point for us in the building. We went to contract with over 600,000 to buy the building and it was left unattended. When we went back in there two years later to close on it, they didn't let everything go, like there was water pouring from the ceiling. So it was even in worse condition when we went back in to, to purchase it. So we had to strip everything down. I mean, nothing was good in there, the electrical, everything. So then now we have to go in and put a completely new sprinkler system in for fire code, put a new water line in. Um, and we don't want, we want to make these very nice apartments for somebody to be able to come in that is looking, you know, that wants someplace to come that they can afford and not have to worry about driving. Like, we don't see people driving that are going to live here. We see somebody that's going to use public transit or walk.
Could I just, this is just bothering me, it's probably an out of place comment, but, um, as I recall, you'd have to cross Pauling Avenue to get a bus, wouldn't you?
No, it's right out front.
If the bus stops out front, then it's going east.
It would go, right.
It would go east, but you're referring to the fact that these are going to be all sorts of urban things. Well, the urban part of Troy is downtown. I don't know what anybody would be getting on the bus for, or the majority of people would be getting on the bus for, to go east. Yeah, but that's not your job. I mean, if you're going to the market, that's fine, but if you're going, if you're going to. Most people, I, I don't want to get into a, you know, conversation with it, but I mean, I'm just saying, to say that this is an urbanly, um, whatever feasible location, to me, doesn't, to me, it isn't. Because a, as you're saying, that people, young professionals, young professionals would be wanting to go into the city and maybe on a bus and getting off and going to Albany or wherever we're going, you know what I mean? You might not stop in Troy, but I don't see that a gazillion urban professionals going east because you're going into Albia.
Right, I can't.
Forget that they call it the east side now. I still call it Albia, but in any event, you're going up that way. Okay, that was just my point. I don't see, um. When you get a bus crossing Pauling Avenue, because that's a dangerous spot too, if you were going to cross Pauling Avenue.
I, I don't know the bus schedule. I really don't. I would have to look all that.
So I'm just saying, some of your, some of your logic is perhaps illogic. Okay, as far, as far as the people that you're speaking about, so what? Okay.
But dollar figures, like, we already spent X just to fix the roof to stop the pain that's going in there. So we have all of our figures written down. We can definitely present those. I mean, just to bring the.
Yeah, we have to see, we have to see figures.
Yeah.
In order to say that it's, you know, financially, you can't, I mean, obviously you're not going to make it a single-family home. I mean.
Even making it a two-family doesn't make any sense.
Right, or you're going to make it because you're making it a fourth family. All I'm saying is you need to, you need to show, you know, why it would be ridiculous to say you would have it as a single family. But maybe you could make it into a fourth family, but it'd cost you this much money and you would be getting this back on your return, blah, 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 as opposed to how much it's going to cost to make it 18 apartments and you're going to get this much back on your, um, for all your work, you know what I mean? So, and you could be very right when you say it's a million, it's going to cost a million dollars for this or a million for that. And obviously you're not going to make it into a community garden. So I mean, that kind of goes without saying. But, um, you know, you really, if you could come up with some figures from the financial perspective, you really have to do that. Um, as Katie said, it's, it's one of the things that we have to consider and we can't ignore it. It's, it's one of the criteria and they all have to be addressed.
We have all the figures and what it would be to, you know, fit it out accordingly to how, you know, for 18.
Exactly.
So.
Exactly, yeah.
Now you're asking, you want the figures, what it would be for 18, but then also the figures for a two-family and then the figures for a four-family. I mean, we build single-family homes, so it'll be very easy for us.
Well, if family residence is one of the permitted uses in that zone, two-family residence is right here. I mean, I wouldn't waste my time doing a single-family.
Yeah, 750, 800,000, and that's just not a demographic that's going to pull there, so.
Right, but you have to show us that, that it would cost you this much, you know? But, yeah, because we have four, four different criteria for. Do you have them in front of you right there? For these variants, no, go ahead. It's, um, you can't realize a reasonable return on a, on a use that's, that is allowed in that zone. You have to show that your hardship is unique and doesn't apply to a substantial portion of the district or the neighborhood, that it won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood and that it was not self-created, the hardship was not self-created. You have to show all of those. Um.
Also add, Kathy, that in addition to those four criteria, that this board is also tasked with approving the smallest variance necessary to achieve the means. So I think that the current line of questioning surrounding why 18 is also appropriate to consider if a smaller amount is also feasible.
But right, maybe you could do it with, uh, I don't know, 12 can or something?
We didn't want to bring family, you know, families because then we thought that it was going to come into a car problem.
Speak into the microphone, please, because there's a lot of people out in the audience.
We weren't thinking families to move in there, so the bigger the apartments you get, you, and it's, can't be discriminatory. You can't say, you know, you can't move into the apartment. So the smaller apartments, which are these studios.
Obviously not going to have a.
Right.
Uh, husband, wife and three kids. Yeah. Right, true. And, I mean, I don't blame you, but you got to show it. And, um, yeah, okay, we won't even get into the parking, which is an issue for us to really address, even though that's a concern of a lot of people. That's not something for us to, um, be concerned with.
Is that clear to people who are here?
I was just going to say that.
I just asked a question.
Truly.
So do you want me to, like, figure out how the bus runs?
No, 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 I was just making the point, Brett, no, I'm saying.
Transfer.
No, 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 no. Well, my, my point only was when you read this and a lot of your explanation went with the idea that it was going to be young professionals who are going to want to live in the urban walkability, yada, yada, all that stuff that they say about downtown and Second Street and, you know, right, it's great, the river front and all that sort of stuff. But I, I don't see that translating to Pauling Avenue. That's, that, I mean, I think everybody, anybody would agree with me, that Pauling Avenue was way too far out for the urban walkability, young professionals. Uh, and if you're a young professional, unless you're a dentist, which I think there's one of those out Pauling Avenue to the east, you're not going east. So therefore you're not getting, you're not going to go on the bus that way. It's not going to bring you any place. Maybe to the market over the weekend, you're right.
Or something like that.
Like, you're not going to, no, it's not going to work. Uh, trust me, it's not going to work to go east if you want to go across the river or downtown to be a urban professional.
I think if it's a nice apartment and that's what you can afford, then they would make it work. If there wasn't anything else that they could afford, there are people.
Okay, that's fine, but then I wouldn't, if I were you, zeroing on the young professional, I wouldn't, but, just my advice. I just don't think that adds to the reason why people would run around Pauling Avenue. Know what I'm saying?
So focus on demographic.
I would focus on something other than the fact that the only place you're getting on a bus is to go east, to, uh, market. You know, or the church, or, uh, you know, things out that way. So I don't know, is anybody else have anything they want to, go ahead, Jack.
Your thought process that out of the eighteen apartments, sorry.
Talking to it.
I thought I did.
No, okay.
Out of the eighteen apartments, is it your thought process that no one in those eighteen apartments will have a vehicle?
No.
You're saying no?
I know, I'm saying it's, I do, I do think there'll be a few that's going to have a vehicle, absolutely.
So there will be vehicles. Okay, thank you.
I think that's hard to say that nobody.
Okay, anybody else? John?
Here's about some of the, you mentioned amenities, is onsite laundry, um, storage areas, common space? Is any of that in the plan?
Within the bill, within the building.
It is. There's a whole baseline downstairs that we would be putting those facilities into.
Okay, and you're, you've described furnished apartments. Do you have any, any experience in, in renting out furnished apartments in the area, you know, in Troy? No?
I'm a real estate agent. I sell new construction. I go on through rentals.
Okay.
Do I know that there'll be things to be replaced? Absolutely.
All right, I mean, my concern is, given the proximity to RPI and the size of the apartments and, and the fact that they're, they're already furnished, it sounds to me more like students rather than young professionals. Uh, I just wanted clarity on that. It's just a concern.
Can I, can I talk on that?
Oh, sure.
So what, I mean, do you consider a post-grad a student? Because that, like, that's kind of where, you know, we do think we're going to have some post-grads, you know, or PhD students, but not undergrads. I mean, that's not what I see. My, I mean, I had to get an apartment for my son down in New Miami and we had to furnish it. So I mean, I under, I understand that concern and I'm sure if I was a resident too, I, that would be my first concern. But if it was a rooming house or something like that, then you, you could rent out the rooms. Um, but we're looking not for that. We don't want that. We definitely want a young professional in reference to who we are going to rent it.
Okay, thank you.
We're not looking to put, like, just crappy things in there. We really want them to be nice apartments. Um, so that's kind of why we were thinking a young professional.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Evie?
Um, I think that ties back to the, the financial breakdown and, and more details on, on the units. Because, uh, you know, if you're talking about post-grad and they don't have much money either. Um, I did a lot of graduate school myself, so, um, uh, if it's really small, tiny units, it might attract, you know, the wide range of students, depending on, you know, how much loans they have. Just a comment.
Okay. Okay, so, Katie, did you want to say something?
Well, the only thing I'm thinking is that I, I don't know how aware the people who are here, um, are that there's no longer, um, parking variance tied to this. Um, because with the new code, it, it has changed how we look at parking. Um, under the old code, we would have had to, you would have needed a variance for probably one for each apartment, right? You would have needed eighteen parking spaces of variance for them. That's no longer the case. So I know a lot of the neighborhood concerns were about parking. Um, that's no longer something that we can consider. We can think of it as a whole in respect to the character of the neighborhood. But it's not something that we can, um, take into consideration as far as, um, whether or not to, um, approve a variance, if that makes sense. I just wanted people to know that that can't be the one and only thing that makes or breaks this, um, application. Because it's not something that we take into consideration in this case. Right, that is something that the planning department would look at, if it, if it goes there.
Okay, so do we have anybody to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Once again, I ask, um, okay.
Can I just say?
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Just for clarification.
And you have an opportunity right here to come back after the opposition speaks, but go ahead.
Just for clarification, understanding that we need to provide you the financial evidence and the other things. Or is the intent then we'll hold a public hearing, solicit comments from the board and the neighbors, and then we'd be able to come back and table a decision? Are we able to request that?
Wait until, wait until you come back before we hear from the neighbors?
Oh, no, I'd love to hear from them tonight, so we can have as much information. But I, I know we're lacking information based on what your comments were, so.
I, I think that's probably the best.
We'll hear the neighbors now, yeah, okay, yep. Well, whoever, not just neighbors, but whoever's in opposition. Yes, we're going to hear them now.
Thank you.
And, right, and then you'll be, um, welcome to come back when they're done to speak to what they said. Okay, go ahead, sir. No, oh, okay, Nora.
Hi, I'm Nora Dwyer. I live at Six Balsam Avenue. And this is a horrible idea. And I know what you said, Katie, about parking and everything. But we've had a lot of issues up on Balsam. Many years ago, Ken Zaluzki and I.
We saw that, we got the information. Yeah, we had our lap.
We had to make it one-sided parking because the street is so narrow. We live in a neighborhood where we all know each other, we respect our parking spots, and, you know, it, it's just, it's an honor thing. We don't have to put lawn chairs out, we don't have to put anything out.
But we can't, we can't look at the parking.
I, I, I understand that, but I don't think these people.
I thought Katie just explained.
Yeah, it's just, it, it's not a good idea.
Right.
Because to get young urban professionals with cars, so then what's going to happen to the elderly? What's going to happen to the handicapped? And I know parking's not an issue.
Okay, so since it is an issue.
I'm just saying my piece because it's not right for, for eighteen people to come in and ride a bus. And you know as well as I do, they're not going to ride a bus. Crossing Pauling Avenue in the morning is, it's taking your life in your hands. It, it's just a bad idea and I, I just, there's, there's not even room for emergency vehicles to come up hardly and people are parking on both sides now. Again, my apologies, I know that's not an issue, but it's just a bad idea and I hope you vote it down.
Okay, thanks a lot. Um, anybody else have something they want to say, everyone, about the parking? Go ahead.
My name's Andy Clermont and I own a house at Three Balsam Avenue. And I've owned that for thirty-five plus years. I lived there for a number. I now live in Towne Colony and I rented out. And I take real good care of the property and the people there. I sent you all a letter.
Yes, we got it.
Read that. Um, let's not talk about parking, let's talk about the character of the neighborhood, okay? Um, since I've been there, I've seen it decline and it started when the city changed the parking to one side. But the character of the neighborhood has changed. The house next door to be number five has been taken back for taxes. I know the man who owned it, Eric, couldn't make a go of it because his property has no driveway. And therefore he was unable to rent units out, which caused him financial hardship and the buildings deteriorating. At number seven, Balsam Avenue, we've seen it turn over multiple times because people keep buying it. And after two years, they realize they can't make a go of it. We're changing the character of the neighborhood. It was a beautiful street. I enjoyed living there. The neighbors were all two-family, three-family, multifamily houses. Everybody got along. It's changed. On, as far as hardship, the hardship was created when the property owner chose to purchase this property, knowing how it was zoned. The driveway didn't disappear or the building didn't change. It is what it is. So they created the hardship when they bought it and decided to make it this use. Think up something else. It could be an office building, maybe for some doctors or attorneys where it's minimal traffic coming in and out. They could divide the building up that way. They could find something else if that's what they wanted to do. Um, are we going to put some restrictions on this property because we want these young urban workers? How about we put some restrictions on the property if this were to be granted? Um, maybe we should have an age limit. Maybe we should make sure that they're working people, not students. There's, there's a lot of restrictions that could be put on this. Eighteen people, college, I have four children. They all went to college. They all had cars. They're going to have cars. There's going to be eighteen units and there's going to be eighteen cars. It's going to change the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood, single, two-family residential, this does not fit.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Clermont. Anybody else to speak in opposition? I trust you have something different to say. Okay.
Hello, my name is Adam Mello.
Would you speak up? Use the microphone, please.
I'm located next door to this building at thirty-two Pauling Avenue. I've been there now for almost five years. I bought it as a foreclosure and me and my wife have worked really hard to fix it up, uh, as did our next-door neighbors on the other side of us. Uh, so this definitely stuck out to me. We've been asking around, trying to figure out what's been going on with our property next door and just got this letter in the mail and so started kind of digging into what was happening and why. Uh, so I, you know, some of the comments have already been gone over, uh, how parking would impact the atmosphere and how eighteen people coming and living in this residential community would have an impact. So I'm not going to, um, continue beating that dead horse. I definitely am going to fixate on the idea that this is clearly a self-created hardship through purchasing without going through this variance request, um, in tandem with the purchasing, because I know that can be done. So usually you would submit this kind of, you know, you'd be at this point when you're still not locked into a contract. So that way you're not going through this with the proper, like, sequence of events that someone with real estate experience should really know. Uh, stands out to me as like a very good reason to just ignore this entirely. I believe that there is supposed to be public posting on and around the property. Uh, the code mentions that there needs to be public posting in two locations close to or on the property, at least seven days prior to this. And there's still nothing there, um, that I've seen. I went by it every day to check, didn't see anything. I have kids, three kids, and I don't really feel super great about eighteen rotating whoever wants these tiny three hundred to four hundred square foot apartments. Uh, I know the average size for studio apartments is five hundred and twenty-three square feet, so I have no idea where they're getting this concept that people are just like, you know, clawing at each other to get these tiny, super nice places who don't have cars. It just feels that it's a thinly veiled effort to recoup losses at a poor financial decision. I think that it's very clear that this decision to especially go for eighteen seems just greedy to me. And, uh, I think that it's pretty clearly to me, from my perspective, obviously I have a vested interest, I'm the next-door neighbor. I'd like to see this property be used. Uh, I, I do think that there could be several families that live here. There is a patch next to it to potentially put in a parking, small parking area, if parking was such a concern. So, you know, in reading through the proposal, I did not feel that there was really adequate research. Uh, I was pretty surprised by the cursory amount of information gone over. And it just feels like a half-baked effort at recouping losses from what seemed like a good idea, but wasn't really a fully flushed-out plan. Uh, so I definitely didn't hit everything that I wanted to hit because, uh, I was up late last night reading code, which isn't what I typically want to do and, uh, but definitely me and my wife, who's on here, have like a very strong opposition to this. We would just like to suggest that they come up with a significantly better i- idea in how to use the space. And I like the suggestions of the previous gentleman, that it could be used as a variety of office spaces and things that would have traffic during the day while other people are at work. Uh, there's like a lot of different ways that this building could be used, especially now that it's been gutted and there've been construction workers there all the time. Uh, it's in a place that's a fresh slate. There's a lot of different things I believe that could be done. Um, so I would definitely like to see more research, um, as you've pointed to, for different potential uses. Because I think that this is a narrow view with a fairly, like, excessive number of units. And, yeah, I, I really, it's a self-created hardship and it is going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. That feels almost factual to me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mello. Before we go any further, could, Angie, could you speak to the public posting? Question about, is that still in the code that there has to be, um, public posting? It used to be a long time ago. There had to be a big sign in front of the house that said this is going to be, um, come before the next zoning board meeting or whatever. It's a requirement for planning, not for zoning anymore?
This says, okay, chapter two eighty-five, forty-seven, public posting applicant for any of the actions listed on two eighty-five dash thirty-three, which this is, it's required to post notice provided by the planning department in or on these two visually conspicuous locations on the parcel request at least seven days prior to the hearing to be conducted for the application.
But it's at the planning depart, the planning department, not the zoning board?
This is in the zoning, chapter two eighty-five zoning, article three, admin enforcement.
It used to be, the zoning, the zoning board used to be that you had to have the big sign in front of your house.
Why would it be listed?
Okay, well, you should do it for zoning too, because we're not exactly second-class citizens, okay?
Because it is in the same section, so.
Right, it should be, it should be up. If the zoning issue is equally as important as a planning board issue.
Yeah, I think so.
Um, and, um, if, if they're definitely, if it says it in the code, then it should be for both planning and zoning. One used to be yellow and one was orange, Angie, back in the day. Um, so you knew which one you were, just giving you the advice, because I mean, I'm just telling you, if you saw the yellow sign, you knew there was something going in planning, if you saw the orange, it was going to zoning or vice versa. And if it says it should be, then it should be. So I'm not telling you personally, but I'm a little wrong, okay? That answers that question.
Very much.
Yeah. Anybody else to speak in opposition? That's something different from what's already been said? I defy you to come up with something different.
Hi there, my name is Moselle Wokup and I live with my roommates. I'm thirty-two Pauling Ave, floor one. Um, so the Mellos are landlords. Um, we've only lived there for a little bit. Um, I did send in an email today.
Yep.
Um, but I just wanted to talk about, um, I know parking's not an issue that we're discussing tonight, but in the proposed plan, talking about young professionals, um, I am a young professional. Um, I work at Samaritan Hospital, um, and Pauling Ave is not a walkable community, um, not to Samaritan Hospital, not to RPI. Um, and certainly not for groceries. Um, the nearest grocery store by mileage is the Hanaford on Broad Avenue and it'll be a fifty-five minute walk. Um, just a little bit further by mileage is the one on Main Avenue and that's a forty-five minute walk. Um, and just realistically, this neighborhood is not a, a walkable neighborhood. Um, it's very homey. Um, we've grown to really love living where we, we are, getting to know our landlords and their children, um, and the people around us. Um, you know, walking our dog, our neighbors will say, hi, Riggins, and it's, it's this community. Um, and I just don't think that eighteen studio apartments is, is a good fit for our community. Um, you know, people come and go, especially college students, um, but really investing in the community, people that are going to move in and, and live for, for a while. Um, and again, I know that we're renters, but we have no intentions to leave, um, the Pauling Ave neighborhood right now because we do love it. Um, and I admire Cindy in buying this building and wanting to, um, be an entrepreneur and, and wrench out, I think. Um, in theory, that's a really good idea, but I don't think that the Pauling Ave, Avenue neighborhood is, is the way to do it.
Okay, thanks for that. Oh, sure, you want to ask her a question? Yeah, sure.
With regards to the character and the traffic count.
With regards to the character and the traffic count. Do you and your roommates have cars or do you take the bus?
So we have cars. And we, we all drive to work. Again, it's like a five-minute drive for me. One of my roommates works in Albany, one works in Troy. But even both of us that work in Troy wouldn't walk to work, especially not in the winter. Twenty, you know, twenty to twenty-five minute walk to the hospital in one to two feet of snow. For seven, P to seven-three, seven-thirty AM shift, I would, I would never do. It just doesn't seem very realistic for our neighborhood. Something I'd like to mention as well, I'm sorry, I kind of forgot about this. I did put it in my email. But just with a few issues we have had in the past already with this building is there was a few occasions between the hours of twelve AM and four AM that work was being done. Like, I don't know what type of drills or whatever. I don't know work stuff, but to the point that our dog was barking, woke us up. It was loud. And the second instance, we did, we called police and we just said, hey, we don't know what these people are doing, but it's like the morning hours and it's loud. And I believe they came and addressed it because it, it did stop, but just it doesn't set a good precedent.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? You've got something different to say, right? Okay, what's your name?
My name is John Keen.
Got yours too.
Okay.
Your email, right?
Yes, I live at Two Bowls on the Avenue. It was adjacent to the property on Paulson Avenue. I lived there for fifty-one years. I never have any problem with the previous owner. But I am concerned about the future problems. I also am concerned in my age that pretty soon I may be selling my house. And I'm really concerned about the impact on the valuation of my own. And also, also our parking, I don't know, can't think about it. Living on Paulson Avenue, that street is filled every night with cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Anybody else? Okay, can we have a show of hands for how many are in opposition to this proposal? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, you're raising your hand because you're in opposition, right? You couldn't possibly have something to say that your husband didn't know how to say, right?
I think someone just mentioned it, but I was just going to mention, the code says it wouldn't harm. You don't want to put in something that would harm like the property values.
Yes, right, yeah.
And you just mentioned that, that that would harm like the property values in the area.
Right. Okay, good. Thank you. She just wanted to agree with the property value issue. Okay, so let's raise your hands again, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? Do I see nine? Angie? Ten. Oh, you're right, yeah. Little Miss Mellow, whose name I did not get, but you're right. Okay, so would you like to address some of the issues?
Yes, certainly. I appreciate all the feedback that the board had and also the neighbors as well. So again, if we can come back a month from now and try to provide whatever additional information. I do know the financial data is something you're definitely looking for and we will look into the bus routes as well. One thing I might ask, so this was a thirty-six bed facility to do. Was that done under special use permit? And if there were way we can get a copy of what that special use permit was and just so we have an understanding of how that was granted and.
Angie?
That's got to date back to the.
Yeah, that's probably predates.
I'd say it might have predated.
Predated the old ordinance, which was.
Predated, yeah, ever, ever. It's been.
So there probably wasn't.
Mr. Mello has some information.
Hmm, okay.
Were you able just to get a copy of that so we understand where that came from?
Yeah, Angie.
Okay, okay.
If he, if he read it somewhere, then, right.
That can be provided. I just want to note that obviously the criteria for a special use permit are different than the criteria for a use variance.
Okay.
And the criteria for a use variance, it's not a balancing test, so they have to find each and every one of those factors. And one of the factors that was raised here tonight by one of the speakers was whether or not this was a self-created issue since the property was purchased. Either knowing what the zoning was for the area or not knowing but purchasing in anyways, not doing the due diligence to find it. So I think that that's going to be something that's going to have to be explained because typically I've, I've explained to this board before, but typically if you purchase a property, even if you don't know and didn't do the research, that is essentially a self-created hardship. So you would have to have some type of information to overcome that.
I think what you're saying for the special use permit, that's not a requirement.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you all set then?
Yes, thank you.
For coming up, all right. So we're going to make a motion to table. Is that the consensus?
Yeah.
John, do you have something you want to say? Oh, okay, by all means.
Motion. Should table this until the next?
We have a second on that? Jack McCann seconds, are you in favor? I opposed, carried. So we'll table till next month. First Wednesday in June. Yep. Next case. Okay. Next case, PLZBA twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-two-six, seven-twenty-three Burden Avenue, mixed use two. An area variance is requested by, by the applicant, Richard Bonnet. He's proposing to convert the two-family house into three dwelling units. The minimum gross floor area required is seven hundred square foot per unit. Building is one thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, so a roof of five hundred and eighty square feet is requested. The applicant present, there you are.
Here I am. I'm Rich Bonnet.
Bonnet, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I live in Colony. I'm here on behalf of seven-twenty-three Burden. And I'm just proposing to utilize the space that's already there, configure the way that the place is already set up and just write however the building was and just do everything up to code, new plumbing, new electrical and everything needed to make it a three unit, up, up to code and all those things.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I, I have a question. It's, I'm confused. Because it's saying it was a two-family house. You're saying it was a three-family house when you bought it. Neighbors are saying it's a single-family house.
I'm confused too.
Yes, okay, okay.
It's a single family.
So it's set up as a single family, but it, but if you go in it, the top, top floor is separate apartment rooms. Second floor is apartments and rooms and it has, it doesn't have a kitchen in it, but you can tell like at some point it did. So it looks like what happened was it was originally a two-family and then they switched it to a single family. And then in the basement, they had a whole bunch of stuff down there and a whole bunch of meters. And I had a similar building like this that I did on ninth that was kind of configured the same and I had to go through the same process. So talked to Angie, she mentioned that code changed. No, I don't have to do the two permits and whatnot, so I'm just here to get that relief.
So Angie.
But the new code is, it's a, it's no more use variance anymore because it's a mixed use.
Yeah, it's in like, yeah, it's in like industrial, it's not regular art.
Right.
And so what, what it has to do with that is, I mean, for the single board for, for us.
The floor area, okay. Okay. So you want three dwelling units that won't be seven hundred each?
So that's the weird thing, like for the basement, the ceilings down there are like eight feet. There's enough space in there to get two bedrooms. I don't know how the square footage is being calculated based on what the city has.
It's from, it's from the ground up, right? Where footage?
Yeah, I don't know how it's calculated, but I don't think it's.
You're right, right.
I personally don't think it's accurate, but I didn't come here like to bait that.
Okay, could I, could I just ask you a question? And maybe it's, it's in here somewhere and I'm just missing it. You're just buying this property now?
Yes.
You haven't owned it all along?
No.
Because there was a lot of criticism from the two people who were, who wrote it about how it was, you know.
Yeah, it was.
It was not a nice building and you know what I mean? It wasn't cared for and yada, 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 but that wouldn't be your fault if you didn't know it.
No.
So you're just buying it now?
Yeah, I provided like the feasibility with like all the numbers, but it needs like massive work. It's going to need everything. It's going to need plumbing, electrical. It's going to need to be fully gutted.
And, and just because I also probably didn't go as far as I should have. You're going to, it's a two fam, it's a two floor, two floors.
Two floors and then the, the additional unit would be in the basement.
Oh, so each floor would be a different apartment. You're not going to make two apartments on one floor?
And no, there's no.
Okay, one, two, three.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
And there's an exit, a specific exit from the basement?
Yeah, so we have to create one, we have to create an additional exit for the basement, but it's not an issue to do that.
Okay, okay.
Well, depends. So technically two, but one doesn't have running water in it. So that's why I think whoever had it, use it as a two-family, switch it back to a single, but I think it was originally a two.
Okay, that's different than I, I was headed in my head that you were the owner and you were just trying to make it another apartment in there.
No.
But now you're going to be a brand new owner.
Correct.
And you're going to do it right, right?
I've done a lot of projects in the city and always done them. I was actually here the other day like with another issue, but I don't know if you guys know Eighth Street.
I know where it is.
I know it.
There's a building on, on the corner of Eighth, three-seventeen Eighth.
Eighth and what?
Eighth and, who's it?
Yes.
It's like, it was like an old nasty green building.
Yeah.
You just put brand new siding on it and that's like the quality of work that we give.
Yep, it looks, yeah.
Nine-day difference.
Okay, all right. So that's different for me. Is there anybody here to speak in favor? I would say not. They all let us. Nobody to speak in opposition? Maybe, did you have something you minded to ask? Oh, okay.
So I just have a question. Why not leave it as two apartments and some storage in the basement?
Well, typically I would just leave it like that, but if you saw, if you saw the basement, it's too much space to just use it all as storage. Like the, the whole basement spreads the whole length of the house. So with efficiencies nowadays, we could easily just put combo units for hot water and heat in each unit and just do it the proper way and, you know, not make it an eyesore anymore.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's.
So you need the income from a third unit in order to do the work that you need to do.
Yeah, because we aren't going to cut any corners. It's going to be done to code and correct. And to do it that way, the, the third unit has to, has to be in place.
Well, it certainly is an unattractive building now and it's next door to those habitat humanity buildings. And it would be certainly, would be nice to see it cleaned up. You know? So do we have anything, any questions for the applicant? So then are we willing to just take a vote?
I, I do have.
Okay, sure.
There was a significant environmental assessment form that was filled out.
Okay, that was like my first time filling that form out. I don't know if I made any errors on it, but I'm with like with all the changes and stuff, I don't, I'm not familiar with that.
Have you?
So I tried to.
So this is your first time? So you haven't, have you done any extra research or?
I mean, extra research in the sense that there's, you know, like she mentioned, there's habitat houses right next door.
Right.
There's two and three families all up and down the street. So I don't know exactly that that would be needed. I mean, what would I be researching?
Well, the things you checked off and Katie might want to speak more on, but the fact that it's contiguous to something, a, a, a building on the National or State Register of Historic Places.
It's, it's not a historic building.
Well, you checked, yes.
Oh.
That form, if you put in your address under it, it was a short form and it auto-generated some of these things. So if it is checked, like not manually checked, it may be able to find, but the system generates that because there are sometimes things are in the neighborhood that it's not your building or the next building that you might not. Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's going to collapse.
It's required because it's going to look. So that is why you have to fill it out.
I've done some environmental work in my past work experience and these.
It would actually need a historic review if it were, if it were an actual historic building.
So, yeah, and it's not even plus the if not.
Right, right.
So it's kind of a default.
Yeah, yeah. And you can see the difference between his exes and the checks that the computer made when you're looking at the form.
And I'd just like to add, you know, like my goal is, is to, you know, have affordable housing. You know, some of the buildings that we get are in really, really bad areas. You know, we just want to go in, fix them up and create opportunity like Ninth Street, Tenth Street. And we have some properties over there that people would say that are very, very bad, but you know, our tenants are really good. And what I find is if you give someone a good quality place to live, they'll take care of it.
They'll take care of it.
So that's, that's what I plan to do with this one as well.
Great.
Okay, do we have anything further or should we just go forward with the, me and Secrecating? I don't even know.
Madam Chair for PLZBA twenty-twenty-three zero-zero-two-six. Recommend the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? Okay, John seconds are in favor? I opposed, carried. Okay, we have a motion on the application itself? Anybody want to make it? Okay, John, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Regards to PLZBA two-zero-two-three-zero-zero-six.
Two seconds. I don't know if it's a technicality, but.
PLZBA two-zero-two-three-zero-zero-two-six?
Yeah.
Going to make a motion to approve variance. This is based on taking on balance the, the impact on the community and the work that the owner is going to do on the property to improve it. So the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character. Won't be a detriment to the nearby properties that it's granting as, as we heard tonight and as we saw in the application. The applicants are prepared to make a substantial investment in the property to bring it back to fit in the character. And the variance really, it can't be achieved revising the proposal. We're talking about the character, or sorry, talking about the, the structure itself and the way it's been established. The variance is not substantial as a percentage of a square foot of the building. Having three units seems to fit in here tonight. And it's also, there are other two or three units in the neighborhood. That leads into number four, the variance will not have, I'm sorry, in head verse, factor in physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. With that, it'll be key, in keeping the character of the other building. The variance is not self-created, you know, because the universe coming in, you remedy the state of the building. Bring it back for all those reasons.
Okay, do we have a second? Jack McCann seconds on the motion. Eva Dande?
I support approval.
Okay, Jack McCann.
Yes, to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes, to approve. John Moromile. Okay, so there you go. Good luck.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You're welcome. You too. Have a motion to adjourn? Okay, John. Second, are unanimous?